And welcome to the Wednesday, February 14th. Happy Valentine's Day Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Aislinn, will you please call roll and make sure, Commission, that you disclose any conflicts of interest you may have?
Bar two?
Here.
Any conflicts of interest?
Here, nothing to disclose.
Here, nothing to disclose.
Here, I have nothing to disclose.
Here, nothing to disclose.
Present and nothing to disclose.
Here with nothing to disclose.
Thank you. So the following is official agenda of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Discussion and commission action will be limited to those items on the agenda. Any citizen that wishes to address the commission shall first be recognized by the Chair and shall give his or her name for the record. If a citizen wishes to read any documentation of any sort to the commission, he or she shall first seek permission from the Chair. We will continue with Agenda item number two, which is the approval of minutes. The commission may wish to approve the minutes from the clarification and regular meetings held on November 15th.
Calm down.
November 15th, last year. Commission, is there any discussion from the minutes? Questions? All right. With no further discussion, I would entertain a motion.
I approve the minutes from November 15th, 2023, as presented.
Second?
I have a motion by Hewlett and a second by Phillips. Aislinn, will you call vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. We will move on to Agenda item number three. This is a public hearing. The applicant will be given a 10-minute time limit, and then there is a three-minute time limit for public testimony. Those presenting or testifying will state your name for the record. While giving testimony, questions and comments should be pertinent to the application and should be addressed only to the commission. During the public hearing, there should be no questions, comments, or applause from the audience. Should the meeting go longer than 8:00 PM? The commission will take a scheduled 10-minute break. Commission members must make their decision regarding the application on facts already in the record and information presented during the public hearing. Protocol requires that commission members and audience be recognized by the Chair before speaking. So at this time, I declare the public hearing open, and I would invite the applicant to come forward.
Good evening, everyone. Are you guys picking me up okay on the mic? My name is Bryce Marsh with Horrocks Engineers. I'm located at 2194 Snake River Parkway in Idle Falls, Idaho. I'm here tonight to present the preliminary plat for Hospital View, a subdivision here located in Pocatello, Idaho. Before I get started, I'm a licensed civil engineer, and I'm actually an Idaho State grad, so go Bengals.
Go Bengals.
Fantastic education, might I add myself. You know, it's great to be here tonight. I was just reflecting at goodies just a little bit, thinking about all the sandwiches I've ate and how many times I crossed Fifth Street, for better or for worse, getting to and from classes. And it was great just to reflect a little bit and come back here tonight to, you know, present this project and see how I can be a part of this community once again. It's good to be here, and I also have some family that resides here, so I'm here from time to time. So anyhow, I'm just ecstatic to finally become before the Planning and Zoning Commission for my first time and look forward to working with you guys. So nonetheless, tonight's discussion is regarding this preliminary plat. The project is located on the east side of Hospital Way, directly across from the Porton of Medical Center. For this project, we've been working on this for some time. We've worked extensively with city staff to get to where we are today, so I appreciate their help leading up to where we're here tonight. Several meetings and stuff that we've had on this, you know, we've sat down with Merrill and the staff on pre-app meetings, site plan and review committees, and continuing education, or excuse me, communication, is where it's really gotten us here tonight. So I can't thank those guys enough for helping me assisting through the codes and the process here to present a good product on the screen. So I'm going to turn over and start talking just a little bit about this layout here. Hopefully, everyone can see. Hopefully, it's... I'll start here and just zoom in a little bit on the site information that I have and speak to that just for a couple of minutes. Site's roughly 13 acres. We have 21 lots, 15 of which are buildable. We, as part of this process and application, we created a traffic impact study. That study was completed in accordance with the Bannick Transportation Planning Organization, and that report, you know, goes through a lot of details, but just at a high level, it outlines the existing conditions, some of the assumptions we made, and then some of the future conditions we're anticipating. And then it goes through and talks about different mitigation options that we can have to help ensure the traffic is resolved in a different manner. In any case, that traffic study will continue to be evolved and communicated with the city as we move forward in this project to make sure that the options or mitigation choices are agreed upon and work for everyone. Now, the zoning for this project is residential, professional, sorry, residential, commercial, professional, or known as RCP. As you're aware, this previous project does have a contract rezone on it, and I've just summarized that down here on the plat. So if anyone wants to refer to that, just a high-level summary. Outside that, there's separate documents that outline that agreement. But I wanted at least highlight that we have come up here and generally shown where that contract zone applies to on this project. And so basically, the discussion tonight's not necessarily about the RCP zoning per se or the contract rezone, but I just want to highlight that we meet the intent of that for this preliminary plat and show it upon here. So for this development, obviously, we are going to have... Water and sewer will be provided to all buildable lots, and the trunk mains and stuff are anticipated to be private. The internal access points that we generally show on here, this is just intended to be a private development. I'll talk a little bit about some lots specifically. So we have lots one here on the very left-hand side, and we also have lot 14. I'll dive into just a little bit more detail on the slope analysis, but just at a high level, these are anticipated to remain undisturbed in accordance with the slope development standards. Lots five, 11, and 17, and 20, sorry, are just intended to be common lots. Five and 11 that we show on here, which are mainly what I call kind of the access drives in here, are really intended to represent the ability to circulate throughout the development and give access to all lots. We anticipate the use of cross-access easements to also facilitate the need to get access to all buildable lots. I'm going to flip over to the second sheet here and just talk a little bit more about the utilities and approach accesses a little bit more. The sewer on here, which I'll do my best to... Doesn't look like the projector's showing color very well. But what we have here is basically sewer generally is just going to follow the topography. It's basically going to go from the north side to the south side across the development. And basically, it'll run here. We show stubbing sewer to the pertinent lots for future access and extension. But ultimately, it'll continue to go north here, come through Hospital Way, and then we anticipate tying to existing infrastructure there in the Tuscany Professional Plaza. Water, very similar. We're just anticipating probably pulling from Hospital Way road and looping the mains internal to provide domestic and fire suppression through there. The storm water for this project really is just intended to meet the Porton of Valley stormwater manual, and really will be addressed in detail during design development. The plat has highlighted just some high-level calculations. Everyone's curious about kind of what it may look like or just a high-level overtake. The approach locations here, so approach locations, we show two of them located off Hospital Way. These were located for a few reasons. You have to understand that Hospital Way has some vertical and horizontal geometry if you've ever driven across it. So when we tried to place these approach locations, what I was considering is in part engineering judgment. And so we look at the vertical geometry of the road, and we also have to consider those existing accesses that the hospital has on the opposite side of the road. And to complicate things just a little bit more, we have to consider all the topography across the site and how we can actually physically build a road into that site. So what I'm trying to just briefly summarize here is I feel like those approach locations that we have shown are buildable, but they are also probably the safest options to still allow the development to have access to their property, if that makes sense. So really, at the end of the day, that, my professional opinion is that that's where those approaches have to go to maintain access and to maintain safe site distances for traffic on that road.
Two minutes.
Thank you. The slope analysis here is a sheet that outlines how we comply with the slope development standards for this development, and that's primarily having a slope that has over 15% kind of brings you into that code realm. And so the quick summary here with the time I've got left is we've ran through that slope analysis in accordance with that code of Title 17. And really, what I highlighted here is we plan on reserving this lot one and lot 14. I believe the, you know, if anyone's curious, we've summarized those disturbance areas, but we're intending to preserve a minimum of 1.37 acres for this project. Last but not least, we have a high-level grading plan here for everyone. Really, grading was completed here to show that the property has the ability to be developed. We do have a geotechnical report that we will use going forward and consult with the geotechnical engineer to make sure this design is developed safely and properly. The... We've noted, there's just a few things that I know have been brought up a couple of times. Film material will definitely need to be documented and material tested when it comes to building permits. I know that's important. But overall, the design geometry of this entire project will really be, is intended to meet the design standards the city has established. And so really moving forward, what we're here tonight is to ask for recommendation to, an approval to move forward, in which we would really continue to work with city staff to resolve any design issues and clarify any TIS comments or adjustments we need to make to make sure that the products are right. And so we hope that we can move forward with that in mind, and, you know, really just want to state that this is really just going to be an ongoing process with the city staff following any approval we might get to make sure that the codes or requirements are all met.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't leave yet. We might have questions for you. Commission, any questions for Bryce? I will, I probably will have questions for you, but we'll wait for your rebuttal at the end.
Absolutely.
Okay. Anybody else? No? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Do you want me to leave screen?
Yeah, I think that would be great. You good with that, Matt? All right. So this time, I would like to invite staff to come up.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commission members. Matthew Lewis, Senior Planner with the City of Pocatello Planning Department. As noted in the reading of the Agenda item before you this evening, is a request for preliminary plat approval of a subdivision to be known as Hospital View subdivision. Proposal calls for plating of 13.12 acres more or less into 21 lots, of which lots one and 14 block one are proposed to remain undisturbed. The subject property, as already noted, is owned residential, commercial, professional. The application was submitted by JG Ventures LLC. The representative, again, is Bryce Marsh of Horrocks Engineering. The subject property is, you're probably aware, is located east of Sagewood Residential Neighborhood and west of the Port, or actually, yeah, east of the Porton of and west of, yeah. The land area within the subject subdivision is, again, zoned RCP. Commission members may recall considering a request for a contract zoning map amendment specifically to rezone 8.75 acres plus or minus from residential low density to RCP back in October 2022. Following a public hearing on November the 3rd of 2022, the Pocatello City Council approved the application of which 3.8 acres, again, plus or minus of the 8.75 acres, was rezoned to RCP and also subject to a contract zoning agreement, which is attached in the staff report as attachment B. Any development within the 3.8 acres will be subject to all conditions as required in the agreement, including but not limited to placement of increased transitional landscape buffer, reduction of density, and height limitations. Municipal code does not require a minimum lot size to be maintained for professional office or commercial land uses. Residential uses in the RCP zoning district shall meet bulk and placement standards of the residential high zoning district, basically 30 units per acre, but as you know, based on agreement within that 3.8, if they build multi-family, it's only limited to 24. As Mr. Marsh outlined in his presentation, portions of the site have slopes of 15% or greater. Therefore, the preliminary slope analysis was provided with the application. Staff thoroughly reviewed the analysis in conjunction with historical aerial imagery and finds that the total acreage to remain undisturbed is accurate. The subdivision will be accessed from one of two private drives via Hospital Way. As noted, Mr. Marsh, by Mr. Marsh, a traffic impact study was provided as part of the application. A copy of the executive summary synopsizing the 585-page document, including principal findings and recommendations, is provided in the staff report, and that's attachment E. A copy of the TIS was forwarded to Maury Byington, representing Bannick Transportation Planning Organization for review and comment. His feedback is in attachment A1. Mike Novell, Street Manager with the Street Department analyzed the TIS as well and provided comment. Set of conditions, recommendations are provided within the Public Works Memorandum, which is attachment A and recommended as condition one. Please note that all property owners within a 300-foot radius of the existing property boundaries have been provided notice of the public hearing in order that they may provide comment on the application. Notice was also published in the Idaho State Journal on January 30th of 2024, and three signs were posted on the subject property on January 29th, 2024. Staff has received two written comments, which have been forwarded to the commission for review. Staff finds that the proposal is compliant with all applicable standards of City Code 16.20.050 and recommends that the seven conditions as outlined in the staff report be included with your decision. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and as you know, Merrill is in attendance, and if you have questions for infrastructure or TIS, anything of that nature.
Thank you, Matt. Can you first please verify that no other public comment has been received since the two that we were emailed?
I have not received any.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I would invite Commission to ask staff any questions they may have.
Madam Chair, I'd like to...
Yep, please.
How many exits will it be to this project? Just one or two?
Well, there's, currently, there's two that are proposed.
Well, you have two at the hospital, one on one end.
Those are the only ones. So if you notice in the staff conditions, I don't know which one it is, but the lots that are abutting Hospital Way, we want to, we're recommending that there be our restrictions on that so they don't have access, you know, individual access from those lots. So you only have the two access points on there. Those are the only ones. And then it works internally within the development.
Well, what I'm looking at is the access roads that are in this project will not line up with either one of those at the hospital, right?
No.
So we're going to have actually four?
Yeah. And so as Mr. Marsh noted, and he can elaborate if you like, is based on where they, if, where they place those approaches into this, they took into account those two other approaches and what was the safest into this, into this property for development.
So where, where would the, that crest of that hill, or, you know, the rise, where's the access going to be, or let's say, the exit road from the project from that point on the ridge?
Yeah.
I mean, it's sort of like turtle back.
Right.
We got, we got streets on both sides and...
Merrill, Bryce, would you be so kind as to move back to where we can see both things for us, please? I think that will help.
And I don't have to reference the page. Don't steal anything.
I think PP 1.1 would be great.
Okay. Commissioner Bar two, Merrill, I'm Merrill Coyle with Engineering Department. So currently, right here, you see that, the hand part right there?
Okay.
That is the north access to the hospital, to Porton of Hospital, right there. As you come up here, center streets over here, here.
Right.
Center streets this way. So you'd come in, come in more the south direction, and there's the first approach that goes to the hospital. And then you go here, another roughly 400 feet, and on the opposite side of the road to this property will be the first access, the north of the access to this property, due to the terrain and the grade, is what's proposed right now. And then from there, you'll go another 430 feet roughly to the southerly access to the same property. And then you're at least 520 feet at that point here. So see this access right here?
That's where the hospital...
That's the hospital access. So this property will have two accesses and two accesses only, the property in question.
And you got two for the hospital.
Well, you got two for the hospital. You've got four for the hospital down there. You've got Bertie Thompson and everything else, but right now, we're just focusing this area right here.
I'm just talking about the hill.
Yeah, right here, we're focusing. You got four accesses on the hill, on the crest of the hill.
I can't see why you can't hook up to one of the hospitals.
Because it's on the opposite side of the road.
But the, the south one, the one that goes to the main...
Because they don't own that property.
Well, you can make it, or make the road wider, put double lanes in there.
There's no way to get this access to line up with the south access. They do not own the property. That's like me trying to come in and put my gazebo in your front yard.
Yeah, but if you're reconstructing the road and you need a...
We're not reconstructing the road. They're only building their road.
If you would, you would take another few feet off to do what you need to do from the property owner, right?
Well, you could, but you'd still not line up that property. You'd still not make an intersection. We're not going to put a frontage road along there to line up that intersection.
I'm not saying that either, but if you, you, I don't like it on the top of the crest. Just don't like the looks of that.
Well, that, that access right there to their southerly access is far much better location than the southerly access to the hospital. I can tell you that right now. I drive that all the time. So there's no way to line those up. That crest, that right there, their property right there, I even drove it again today to lay stuff out in preparation for this meeting, and that southerly access is the best location that I can see right now where they own the property and what they control.
Merrill, is it true that if we were to line those up, it would be higher risk because then we're looking at possibly traffic lights and people going in several different directions without those than keeping them spaced out?
That is, that's possible in the future that that would happen.
So you're going to create an intersection right there on the very top, right?
We're going to, a driveway, not a full intersection, but a driveway.
Yeah. I just think that there's a way eliminating one of those accesses.
Well, the other problem is, is with, with this amount of property, fire department is going to require two accesses. This property will require that there's two accesses under the International Fire Code.
So when you're all said and done, there will be three accesses into the hospital.
Not changing access.
We're not doing anything with the hospital.
The hospital's across the street.
This middle one is only going to be a T.
Yes. It's only a T. There is...
It isn't going to monkey, do anything with the hospital.
No, the parking garage is right there across from that. You can't, we're not putting an intersection to the parking garage.
All right.
Does that understand that now?
I do now, yes.
Okay.
I just didn't want congestion on the top of the...
Yeah. This is a T, these are T intersections. There's no four-way intersections in this development.
You can have a passing lane and crossing lane and that.
Correct.
Yeah, because a light over there, at times, the traffic's quite heavy, and if they're all, you got one line stopped at a light or for whatever.
Right.
We get enough, six months out of the year, we could have slick streets, and you got cars that won't come from a starting stop position and try to take off.
Correct.
It is pretty steep. I mean, stop and go.
Right. Exactly. Any other questions?
Okay, I'm okay with the...
No, I'm good as far as staff goes. Any other questions? All right. So at this time, I'm just going to remind you that when you come to the podium, you need to state your name. Please remember to only address the commission and not the audience or the applicant or the representative. You'll have three minutes to testify, and you will be stopped when time runs out. Please keep questions and comments pertinent to the application. Please do not duplicate questions, comments, or concerns from previous testimony heard today. And at this time, I would like to invite anybody providing testimony in support of the application to come forward. Anyone providing testimony uncommitted to the application, please come forward. And anyone providing testimony opposed to the application, please come forward.
My name's Brady Moon. I live at 763 Bitterroot Drive. We just have a couple of questions, concerns. The buffer area, again, they've mentioned it, but in the contract zone, it says 20 feet, and then when I was looking at it, it looked like it indicated 10 foot, so we just wanted to make sure that that was going to be correct. And then we had questions about that north entrance. If you walk that, the visibility, if you put it there, to me, it seems like that's going to be a wreck waiting to happen, visibility, because it's on an incline, and then also the angle of it. So when you take those things into consideration. I've lived on a corner where I've had wrecks in my backyard. It's not fun, so I think that could be a dangerous placement. Couple other things we're concerned about, if it's done in phases, that we'll have bare land in our backyard, and that's a dust trap coming up there. So if we're doing it in three different phases, that, that could be an issue for us as residents. Because according to the comprehensive plan, it says proposed zoning or land use restrictions, standards, fees, policies, and regulations proposed to implement the goals, objectives, and policies of the plan will not adversely impact... and policies of the plan will not adversely impact property values." So we're wondering if an empty dusty field is going to impact our property values. Couple other things from the plan. Goal three says, "The comprehensive plan wants to develop a continuous greenway system that connects the local neighborhood centers and outdoor amenities while promoting a healthy community through recreation and active transportation." And then goal five says of the plan, "It wants complete neighborhoods," and says, "It will utilize developmental standards to promote the development and maintenance of trails and paths in conjunction with development, including public, residential, commercial, and industrial developments." So this is done to ensure that the neighborhoods have safe and convenient access to quality public schools, open spaces, and recreation facilities. So our concern is we didn't see any green spaces or trails in the plans here. And according to the goals of the comprehensive plan, in my eyes, it doesn't meet that criteria. You've mentioned some of the other rain-water management. We're kind of concerned about the water gathering, because you take the vegetation off and stuff like that, too. You're going to have rain-water issues and so forth. And I guess I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Brady. Anybody else providing testimony opposing the application? Okay. And then before you do your rebuttal, there's a few things I do want to mention because we've received comment. So one thing I'd like to mention is the comprehensive plan is a guide. It's not a requirement. And we are here to make sure that they are following the code and not the comprehensive plan. I know that there is a trail on the west side of the hospital that would be easy access for citizens up there, so they'd be able to access trails and green space. The code also covers erosion and control. And part of that says what they can strip, clearing and grubbing, and how long they can have it open. It also says about keeping the stormwater on site. They have to do that not only during construction, but after construction is complete, they have to continue that. Drawing PP 1.0, which you can access online if the packet's not over there, clearly shows a 20-foot buffer for that contract rezone. I know sometimes these are hard to look at, and very small. I'm wishing I'd have brought my glasses. But just some things, the rain and water will be handled under the erosion control. Hopefully just some things to ease your minds as far as that goes. And so I just wanted to state that. And then Bryce, if you have anything else, you are welcome to come up at this time.
Bryce, FYI, you'll have three minutes.
Starting...
Oh, there's no time limit on rebuttal? Okay, I'm sorry.
Well, it's Valentine, so we're going to give you three and a half.
We'll begin. I don't drop everything here. Okay. Okay. So, Mr. Moon, thank you for expressing your concerns here. I will just, since I have a digital view here, again, I know sometimes this line work can get hidden in there, but we do demonstrate that 20-foot landscape buffer that crosses that from here all the way over to the contract rezone, which is above and beyond your prototypical 10-foot landscape buffer as negotiated in that contract rezone. To address, there was a question concern on the north access point, which is here, which we kind of hashed out a little bit previously earlier. My personal opinion is, again, like I said, the approach locations there were specifically placed based on the geometry given, existing access points, and all that stuff. And I guess there's a point of comparison. If you consider, if you think design geometry is an issue, consider how this already functions in place. It's dealing with the exact similar constraints, and it functions just fine, to my knowledge. So I don't have any concerns. I think it'll function just fine as long as it's designed appropriately, and specifically so making sure we have the site triangles are the most critical point of these intersections to keep them safe. So that'll be something we'll hash out in design details. The erosion controls, some of the commissioners have mentioned, you know, typically we provide a whole plan sheet or multiple plans that outline minimum erosion control requirements. And then contractors will actually put in place SWIP plans, stormwater pollution prevention plans, to mitigate any of those erosion controls, fugitive dust, which I know is a very common, you know, dust blown around situation. So that's really handled at the contract level. And I believe the EQ actually administers that process now, if I'm not mistaken. So I believe that it shouldn't be a concern. And if it is, that's something we need to hash out with the contractor at the time of development. I know there's a comment on property values. In my experience, I've never had a subdivision impact anyone's property values. If anything, it's inflated those. Comprehensive plan, I agree. This is not necessarily the meaning for that. I will note that we are improving the sidewalk on the north side of, or sorry, not the north, the east side of Hospital Way. So if you want to consider that, that could be an element of comprehensive plan. If you want to take it that way, at least I feel it kind of helps provide continuity and access along the frontage there. So that is something we have shown and proposed. Last but not least, stormwater for this project, again, the preliminary plat does not necessarily require us to go into great detail about the entirety design of this system. It is something we will address in design documents. And there is a very specific manual that the city has adopted as a guidance document. And I believe that's called the Porton Valley Stormwater Manual, hopefully I'm not getting that wrong, in which we will develop, you know, a master plan or a report document and design our documents that adhere to that manual to ensure that stormwater is captured and retained accordingly. So that's all I have.
Okay. We might have questions. I know I do. Marjana?
I do. You outlined for us when you were presenting that there's going to be two big chunks that are undisturbed. What will that look like, then? Is it just going to remain sagebrush, what it is now? Okay.
You're correct. Yeah, that is...
You're not going to scrape it all off and...
The code requires that we cannot disturb it temporarily or permanently. So yes, it would remain as is.
As it is right now. Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
Any other questions?
So, thank you for doing the traffic impact study. I know those were some concerns in the comments that we received, even concerns when we did the rezone. There are quite a few comments that are to be addressed. And I guess my biggest question is, after, I'm sure you've reviewed these in depth, after reviewing these and looking at the things that they want you to reconsider, are you confident that you're going to be able to keep your subdivision as it is with the same approaches and property lines?
Yes, absolutely. So to answer your question, the TIS is a large document. If any of you read all of it, good for you. It is not my bread and butter. I have technical consultants that work underneath me that guide me along that path.
We appreciate the professionals.
And, you know, so the comments that we received, you know, as professional engineers, we sometimes have to make assumptions, our best judgment about what we've done in the past, what works and what's safe. Some of those assumptions may just need to be tweaked. I think there was, like, for example, one of them was like, I think, a 4% annual growth rate that they've suggested is maybe just a little bit on the high side. So, you know, we're open to understanding if it's 3.5%, 3.2%, whatever it may need to be. But when you look at the high-level ramifications of that, it is not going to change the overall recommendations and outcomes of that TIS, meaning the mitigation things that we have suggested are needed aren't going to move that needle. 1%, you know, 2%. So those suggested changes and everything that we have discussed and talked about, we will absolutely address those. But I don't think the outcomes are going to be such that we're entertaining a totally different discussion on that. So with that being said, it doesn't move the needle on terms of, you know, how this development functions or whether or not it can safely function. So I feel confident that with a few massaging, understanding the city's perspective on what are favorable mitigation options, meaning, you know, when I say mitigation option, right, I mean, the traffic engineers are trying to figure out if there's a delay, what we can do to reduce that delay, or how to solve the problem, right? So when I say mitigation options, there is a whole list of things you can do, right? Some as simple as a stop sign, some as simple as a traffic lights, you know, roundabout. There's a whole slew of things that can mitigate the situation per se. So I think what we have to do is work with the city staff. And I think you also have to understand, at the time of this application, we weren't even given the opportunity to have those conversations yet with them, which is totally okay. And that's all I'm trying to say here is, we have no reservation to continue to work with Merrill, with Mike, on the street department, to figure out what those adjustments need to be. But I don't feel it's going to move the needle. And I still think what we propose will be very similar, and the mitigations really won't necessarily change outside of what we need to do to work with them on what the appropriate mitigation measure is.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question for staff.
I do, too, Matt. I have one more. Thank you. Appreciate that, Matt. I have one more question for you.
Oh, you want me to start?
Yeah.
Hi, Matt.
Hello.
Just, I want to be really clear what this is exactly. A preliminary plat, this is not, why do we have them come with a preliminary plat? Are they committed to where these lines are?
Yeah, they can, as long as, if they come in with a final plat, there are conditions within the subdivision ordinance that says if there's a, you know, a major shift in a road, if they add a road, if they add lots...
And they have to come back.
That kind of stuff, then there's a possibility that that would, they would have to come back to, through the preliminary. The preliminary is, it's more like, I don't know, kind of a blueprint, if you will. All the dirty work is really done at the final plat, as Bryce said. Like, you're getting all the construction drawings, you're getting, you know, all the details, curb gutter sidewalk, you know, the road configurations.
And what kind of buildings go where, and that kind of...
Yeah. And so when the final plat is actually, so all the infrastructure has to be completed. So if they're required to put, you know, 1,000-foot of curb gutter sidewalk on Hospital Way, then that needs to be completed before the plat can be recorded.
Okay.
Either that, or they can bond for it. Typically, you'll have a punch list sometimes at the end, where you'll have just this outstanding whatever, not a big deal. Yeah, they go ahead and they bond for it, and they do that over time, within a reasonable timeframe. But typically, you'll get all that done. Once the final plat is recorded, then they can come in, they can apply for a building permit.
Okay.
And then that's when all the detail, as far as, you know, your landscape setbacks, your landscaping, all that, yeah.
That all comes in then?
Yeah.
Okay.
And there's going to be more detail at the final plat as far as the stormwater and so forth, because they have to have a SWIP and all that. But also, just with the development as it goes on, if they just develop one lot, then we're looking at that one lot, and what are the requirements for parking, landscaping, building height, all that. So...
That has to be considered separate from the rest. So it's in their best interest to consider the whole thing rather than piece by piece, but...
It's better to have a plat, than, it's better to have a larger plat than piecemeal.
Yeah, okay.
So...
Okay. Thank you.
And just, I have one more question for you, but just, I would like to say, let commission know that I feel like we've been given more detail than we really need for a preliminary plat. And I really appreciate that. It helps see the big picture. So, Matt, one last question for you. You've been able to review everybody's comments. You've been able to look at the traffic impact study. You've been able to look at Maury and Mike's comments. And given everything of those, you still feel with these few recommendations and conditions that this proposal is compliant with the code, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
With the conditions.
Correct. Okay.
And, yes, commission?
I have another question.
Just kidding. Please.
So in some of the conversations that have been concerned, I don't know if you're the best person to answer this, or if Meryl will, there's been concern about how we decide if this is going to be safe, or if it's going to be, and I know Meryl loves it when I ask if this is a safe intersection. But can you at least speak to what is involved with a site triangle, and what the purpose of that is, and what we're looking at there? How does that affect the safety of an intersection? Because I think that speaks to their concerns about if you can see traffic coming over the hill and stuff.
Excellent questions. Merrill Quell, again, engineer for the city. The traffic, you don't see that kind of stuff in the traffic impact study, the speed. The site distance and so forth are based out of a geometric manual that we have that we follow nationwide, for the most part. And then there's dealing with speeds, and then the curves of the road, vertical, horizontal, or whatever, that we're dealing with, with what we've been given. There are a couple other different side manuals for rural and residential areas that we deal with, with inside of town. We do have in our code for site distances for the 25 miles an hour is the best that we've been able to do, is 40 feet and 40 feet. And some of you guys have heard that probably in some of the other meetings and so forth, going back from the property lines and then cutting across so that you can see down the road. We've been trying on some of our collectors and arterials more to use that manual based on speeds and curves. And this development has looked at those. I've stressed that from day one, almost a year and a half ago, when people were coming in, that we needed to make sure that we pick that appropriately, because we do not want to have another woodhill way, for instance, that's there if we're talking the same area and the way things lay out. So we just want to make sure we have all the site distance that we possibly can upfront while we're dealing with the property owners that have control in that, instead of multiple property owners where it becomes a whole lot more difficult and sometimes impossible to deal with inside of town. More information than you needed.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for explaining that for me. I appreciate it.
Do you have any questions here?
I'm good.
No?
Okay. Thank you very much. So with no further testimony or rebuttal, I will declare the public hearing closed. And with that, commission, entertain a motion, discussion?
I would like to just say a discussion. I was tracking everything that you commented on, as well as the comments that came from the letters. The 20-foot, it is a 20-foot buffer zone. It sounds like the site triangle and that part of this is not, I mean, this sounds safe from that regard as far as the traffic. And there is a traffic impact study for it. The bare land question, they're required by, I mean, the DEQ monitors it pretty closely. It's changed, that's changed a lot in the last 15, 20 years, that they're required to keep the dust down. And they'll be on the contractors for that. I don't know of a way that we could have any additional paths in here unless we were to knock paths in that went up across private people's property into the Sherwood Hills area to connect those roads up there. But that's private property. We're not going to take other people's property to put a trail in. I think they're improving the sidewalks, and all the stormwater is going to be retained on site. The preliminary plat, some of the concerns is that, you know, we don't know exactly and how this is going to be built out, things like that. That's not the concern of this. This is just, does this meet the code, the building code that, you know, the contract rezone that was there? And does this follow that? And it does. Okay? Now, there's going to be additional information come forward as they put together the final plat, and as they put together, start the building permits and things. But staff is on top of that. And they're going to make sure that these things that are in place to protect the neighborhood and protect the stormwater and protect the traffic are all followed. And they do that when they get the building permit part in here. It's not ever lined out at this point. This is more detailed than we ever see in a preliminary plat. He didn't have to give us this much information. So I'm happy with this and how it's been presented. And I think that it meets the code and the requirements for the zoning that's there. there. So.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Okay, I can make a motion if you'd like.
Please.
I move that we approve the preliminary plat application from JG Ventures LLC for the Hospital View subdivision, finding the application does meet the standards for approval under Chapter 16.20.050 of the Pocatello Municipal Code with the conditions listed in the staff report and to authorize the chair to sign the findings of fact.
A second. We have a motion by Hila and a second by Fenwick. Eastland, will you call vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Or two?
Yeah.
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
Yes.
And with that, I declare the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting closed.
Thank you.